The November fourteenth meeting of the Withfield Planning Commission is now called to order. Establishment of a quorum. We have it. Approval of the agenda. Requires a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Packing.
Okay, the roll call.
George Whitmore.
Aye.
Keith Jones, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Lisa Anderson, aye.
You gotta say your name?
Yeah. You need to.
Did that change? Okay. John Jones, aye.
David Schmidt, aye.
Consent agenda. The, oh, excuse me, sorry, moving on. Minutes of the regular meeting of October the tenth, two thousand twenty-four requires a motion and a vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
George, aye.
Keith Jones, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
John Jones, I just want you all to know, I've been on this planning commission for a long time. This is the first time I have read all of the minutes. Yeah, I vote yes.
David Schmidt, aye.
Next on the agenda is the citizens' period. Now open the floor for that. And there are no citizens that wish to speak, so we'll close it. Moving on to other business. Presentation by Planning Director John Woods of a list of discussion topics regarding areas of concern about the proposed unified development ordinance.
Since our last meeting, we had invited all the planning commissioners to come in and talk with us about any questions, concerns, or additional information that they would like. And I had several of you who indicated that you didn't have any questions or concerns and opted not to come in, and a couple of you that did take advantage of that, one that sent in a list of concerns and one that did not respond at all. But Chairman Litten requested that we take all of the topics that had been raised during the, those either the written questions that were submitted or the discussions that we had, and that we take some time in this meeting and in future meetings to discuss those to make sure that everybody has the chance to understand why we're doing what we're doing. And you have a list of the topics that were brought forth in your packet. And I've categorized them a little bit to help in the discussion. The first topic was new zoning districts. Some raised the question why we needed so many and if they were appropriate. The next questions that came up were, there were several questions about changes we're making to existing zoning districts. And so we wanted to go through and look at just how the new ordinance will be different, and the main focus being on the residential zoning districts, but also on our existing commercial and industrial districts. We had, so the items two and three on that list of topics relate to the residential and then the business-oriented districts. There were several land uses that came up as questions about how we've designated them on the land use table and if we're getting those districts in the appropriate zoning, appropriate zones. And then there were a few questions about various development standards. And then the last question was one that, question to make sure that we felt that the public input process was adequate. And so the plan is to address each of these topics, take a planning commission meeting to do one or more of those general topics. And this week, this month, we'll be looking at those new zoning districts. And so that rolls into the next item on the agenda.
Which is review and discussion by the planning commission regarding the new zoning districts that are included in the proposed UDO.
All right, so each of you has a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. There was one slide that I added after the packet, but it's also basically a duplicate of another slide that's in the, so you really have the information within your packet that you'll need. The new UDO proposes nine new zoning districts. And want to go through each of them and try and remind everybody why we did, you know, why we chose that particular path and what problems we're trying to address with it. I'm going to group these first three, the three downtown business districts together So the first of the downtown business one basically is the core of downtown. And if you look at the images on the monitor, you know, the character of this area, the buildings are built right up to the right-of-way line, right up to the sidewalk. There's a lot of areas on Main Street that have this development pattern, and a few in some of the side streets that have that similar development pattern. The buildings are generally two to three stories tall. Many of the buildings have mixed use with residential use above the stores. That's probably, I'm going to guess, about twenty-five percent of the buildings have that residential component. An interesting thing, though, is that the current zoning ordinance does not allow that type of residential use in downtown. And so if there were a new structure, according to the current ordinance, if they wanted to build that similar pattern, it wouldn't be allowed. And so one of the things we wanted to address in this was making the guidelines for residential uses more compatible with the historic patterns of the downtown so that we can preserve its character, which has been a repeatedly stated goal, both from council and community groups and others. This isn't something that staff is making up. Many of the buildings cover the entirety of their lot. There are no building setbacks. Speaking of the residential standard, in the current ordinance, for a residential use to be built in that core area of downtown, which consists of the area between Fifth Street up where Seven Sisters is, or, and Sixth Street, which is where the post office is, so that core area of downtown, the type of residential development that you see on the screen is the only type that's allowed. And, you know, it seems counterintuitive that we would require suburban residential setbacks for a residential use in downtown. Now, it may be that this was done as a way to make it impossible to do residential at all, but it would seem like the more logical approach would be to just not allow it, if that was the goal. The buildings, the building development standards for the district that you see up here, what is, this is copied out of the current draft of the UDO. And for lot size for, for uses, we would not regulate it, which is consistent with the current zoning. Except for residential uses, there's no limits on lot size or required setbacks. The proposed-
Good question, John. So essentially, let's just go to a hypothetical universe of the current zoning.
Right.
Let's say somebody wanted to buy, let's just say, that section that Withfield office supplied, you know, that section right there on the floor.
Right.
And let's say this developer was like, yeah, I think I want to build a, you name something that wouldn't be compatible with that, and just tear down that section of Main Street and put something with the setbacks in our current zoning that's allowed in the current zoning, right there in the middle, in the core of downtown.
Right.
So, so what I guess John is trying to say is the problem that the proposed UDO is trying to solve is to maintain the character of your downtown, that historic feel of your building being close to the street, of you not having the yard setbacks on the side. And that's, and that's what we wanted to try to say tonight, is that when we talk about the proposed new zoning districts, we're trying to solve potential problems that this community could find itself in because our existing zoning ordinance is not written to-
It's not written to do the, the things that we say we want it to do.
Does that make sense to everybody? I mean, let's stop for a minute and just have a good conversation about that because, you know, we really want you guys to understand that all of the new zoning districts are intended to solve a problem. So us as staff has identified those problems, and that's how we've written the proposed UDO. So, let's just start with you, Dave. Dave, do you understand the concept that we're proposing there?
Course I do, yeah.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
All right, Lisa?
Yes, and I like the way you've got the two together right there. That's very helpful. That's good.
Yeah, I like it.
Yes.
The existing code is out of date and archaic.
Mr. Whitmore, do you have any comments?
So is the proposal to change the zoning to-
By, by creating, right now, we have one zoning district that covers all of downtown, basically from Eleventh Street to the new Food City is all under the same zoning. The Food City store is a by right use as, and could be built anywhere within that area. And in years past, I've brought up an image of the Rite Aid, a town in New Jersey near where I lived had Rite Aid, Eckerd, Walgreens, and CVS all built downtown drugstores, and each one leveled entire blocks to build it. And so four blocks of their downtown was torn down for a drugstore similar to Rite Aid. Now, this Rite Aid was built on a Greenfield site, I guess, and, you know, in an area where that's the pattern of development and looks right, but I don't think we want that to happen at the corner of First and Main.
Because if somebody applied to build there and build something to that description.
If, today, if somebody applied to do that, I would have no authority to do anything but approve it.
So if the UDO is in effect?
It would change the setbacks. The land use would still be the same, but the setback requirements would be different so that it causes the building to be built in a way that's compatible with the surroundings.
It would require the building to come along with the streets, not have the sidewalk and setbacks. Does that make sense?
And any parking would have to be in the back or in another location.
Or on the street like it currently is.
Right.
Amazing the look and the feel.
So if the UDO, if UDO was approved, would that area of town be DTB one, two, or three?
This, we're talking about downtown business one right now.
It would not be automatically rezoned. And remember, we talked about right now, we're just putting the language in the ordinance that we can set the stage to go through and do some potential rezones so that the land area itself would then be assigned.
Right.
So, but, but we can't, we can't go to the future without creating the language in the ordinance to have the menu options. Remember how we were talking about the menu options? The first, you got to create the menu options, and then there will have to be a second step later on when we're actually going to have to go back into rezoning and take them out of downtown business two and the core area. If, if everybody agrees, you and the townhouse and the landlords of those properties, to take them out of downtown business two, which you down, rezone them to downtown business one, four. And then once they get rezoned, then the regulations would take place for the properties that get rezoned. That makes sense. Does that starting to make sense? I just want to make sure everybody's following along with why we're doing what we're doing. And you'll go through the other two downtown business districts, and it sort of gets back to the sense of, that's the reason why we do not, at some point in the future, want to have the entire existing downtown business two using the same zoning design standards because they're all very different. Like where the log house is, how that building shape and form fits in the landscape, the relationship to the street with you other buildings, is very different than your core, right? And that's different from downtown by Food City. And that's why we need three distinct zone districts to replace what now we have as one. Okay?
It brings up a question, though, from the past. If the current code does not allow residential use in downtown, are those thereby special exception, or were the codes just ignored?
Well, it wouldn't surprise me if there are some that where the code was ignored, but if it was an, an existing use in nineteen, whenever, when this downtown business, down B two DT district was established, then they become lawful, non-conforming uses. And so they're lawful, they're allowed to be there and continue, but if they're ever abandoned, then they couldn't be, for more than two years, they couldn't be reactivated. And the question of whether some of that has been ignored, probably. There's a case down on Calhoun Street where the housing authority applied for a zoning variance to convert a commercial building into residential use because it didn't, it couldn't meet the strict standards of the, the R three zone that it's, that the residential use has to comply with because it's in a B two area. And so we end up having, if we have conversion of commercial buildings to residential, it's just about impossible to do it without a variance under the current ordinance.
Another question as well. The mixed use, you say it's non-conforming. Why was that never changed in the current ordinances?
You'd have to talk to all your predecessors about that.
Because so all these lots, all these buildings in here are non-conforming. Is that right all the way up to the Evan Sham district as well?
Uh, it is, it is.
So they're also non-conforming?
Less so probably there than, and as you get further out in the transitional district, they're probably closer to being inconformant, but in all cases, there, there are some issues of non-conformity throughout the downtown.
Because what you say, if one of these structures built, burnt down, they wouldn't be able to restore it.
Not in its current form. You can, you can build back, but you're going to have to meet the current standards in most cases.
Right.
Now, we also in our UDO have made some allowances for being able to rebuild in an existing pattern, even though a building was destroyed by some sort of a disaster. And so we're trying to, to reduce the restrictions on rebuilding according to our pre-existing urban fabric.
Because I think in the old ones, it was seventy-five percent. Is that correct?
I believe it was fifty.
Fifty percent? If it didn't cost fifty percent, you could build it back to original state?
Right.
Basically. So if that's the case, how did the log house get built back?
Because nobody wanted it to not be rebuilt.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the actual, you know, I wasn't around for the approvals of that, but that was before I took this role.
Okay.
You're talking about when it caught fire or something?
Right.
Well, my feeling is the inside part of it was burned, but basically the whole structure solidly was, wasn't, you know, was still good.
But in the, the original ordinance, it says, I was talking about seventy-five percent of the cost, more than seventy-nine percent of the cost. When you said fifty percent, I thought it was seventy-five.
I think it was fifty.
You could build back according to what the structure was worth. So that's, I'm just curious to know how they managed to build it back if they were following these original ordinances.
I know, but what I'm saying is, is they didn't have to build anything out other than the roof. All the inside had to be redone, but that-
Yeah, the, the basic exterior frame, framework of the building was mostly left intact except for one portion of the kitchen. And so percentage-wise, they probably, it may have been a generous interpretation by the zoning administrator at the time, but-
We also had, I think, prior to John being the planning and zoning administrator, and you had the building officials in the town doing zoning review. We had individuals in the town doing zoning reviews who were not even certified zoning administrators. And I'm not trying to throw shade on anybody, but your planning and zoning department has gone from late zero to sixty in three years just by having John here and being certified.
It should be allowed to be built, built back anyway. I mean, you know, that is crazy.
Well, after a fire, you know, after a fire in the proposed UDO, we, we wrote a very generous section about that, to spell that out.
That's all that.
But, you know, we're, we're trying to solve the problems of the existing with the proposed, but until the proposed is adopted, you guys, you're, we're all living under the existing.
Yeah. All right, moving on. I identified, you know, I hesitate to show these maps of the areas that we're considering because it conveys the notion that we've decided on this. And the fact is that when we look at this closely, we may decide that this block here really shouldn't be part of the core. That's the, the block up where the H and R block office is, and, you know, it's a different character, maybe it's not appropriate. And we can adjust this map appropriately when we have more time to, to fully vet it as staff and you as the planning commission. But that gives you a basic idea of where we're talking about. Now we'll move on to the Evan Sham neighborhood, and this is the oldest core of downtown, of the whole town. And so these structures, some of them date to the late seventeen hundreds, and the pattern of building here, too, the, the structures were built right to this right-of-way line. We even have a few that have porches that encroach onto the public right-of-way. And, you know, these all happened well before there was a local government watching out for these things, but the fact is, it's a quaint, lovely part of town that people remember and with the log house in this neighborhood and some of the other shops there are a favorite place for people to come and visit and see the character of a, of an old, what essentially is a colonial era, community out here in, in our neighborhood. And so the character of the buildings, they aren't, they don't have common walls, they have a space between each structure, they're built close to the street, but they look like they have about a five-foot planting strip in front. And so there's a pattern there that we can design development standards and setbacks for, to, to preserve that. Like in the core downtown, however, there are limitations on the type of residential use that can be built here. And like downtown, if you're doing a duplex, single-family, or a fourplex, you're following those guidelines that come from the, the R three zoning district in this case, which also allows apartment buildings. And so the patterns you see there are examples of the only way new residential uses can be built in that neighborhood. And as you see, that's completely out of character for what's there, but-
Stop there for a second. Another case scenario. All right. Let's say a developer came in and bought that really pretty structure with the yellow and the white board. And let's say that developer, well, let's say they bought that one and the other structure down the street. Let's say they wanted to build a type of building that looks like Birchwood apartments right there.
By right.
By right. They could do that.
They could do it, can't they?
Other than the existing ordinance, they can do that. So again, by trying to create a zoning district that's going to preserve the character of that community, we're trying to protect the local feel of that part of town. Does that make sense to everybody?
The, this district, we actually propose some lot sizes for different types of uses, mostly the residential uses. And these lot sizes, you know, a live-work or a townhouse, those are configuration where the, the houses are physically connected and share a, a common wall generally. And the structure can sit on a thousand square feet and have ample space. And that's not unlike condominium and townhouse projects elsewhere in town, built under our current ordinances, townhouse regulations. We've never had a, a lot size associated with that, so this is new. But as you see, the, as you get larger units, we still allow that, that multiplex like a, what's at Birchwood, but now the lot size is less than what it would have been down at where Birchwood is, where a similar structure requires about sixteen thousand square feet. By reducing it, we can have smaller setbacks and have it fit more the character of the neighborhood. All right, let's- All right, let's go on to let's give the possible geographic areas of this, for this district would be limited to the, uh, area where there's the log house and that block to the south. And then along Seventh Street, you know, where, that's an area where most of the structures have that kind of tight relationship to the street, but separate individual buildings. There's a similar area over on South Fourth Street, next, at Fourth and Washington. And whether that is included in this is really up in the air because it's not a coherent neighborhood. It's just an area that sort of fits that same pattern. And maybe that's, doesn't get included in the final decision, but a possibility. And now for downtown business three. These are transitional areas sort of on both ends of downtown. So, as you come off of the four-lane section of East Main and it narrows down, the character of the street changes. You still have individual buildings, a lot of homes, but you also have an old church and some sort of strip commercial buildings. And so, it's a bit of a hodgepodge. But you do have, and if you look on West Main, you've got, uh, old homes that have professional offices built within. I think a couple of those are actually newer structures that were purpose-built as offices, but they were built in a way to, to fit the residential character of the area. But then you also have the Mount Rogers structure, which is kind of an odd structure in that, you know, it's a perfectly fine use for the area, but with the parking in the front, it kind of breaks that character of the neighborhood. The, the residential standards here probably fit a little better because the homes and offices that are there kind of fit this pattern. And so, maybe in this district, it makes more sense to have setbacks that, for residential uses that, you know, sort of mimic the pattern. They're probably a little tighter than R three normally would be, but not unreasonable. And likewise, I've assigned some lot sizes for different types of uses. And not terribly different from what I put in the Evan Sham area, but with probably a little more options for, you know, since the lots are bigger here, it'll end up having a little different character.
I have a question, John. Well, why did you change the building height from seventy-five feet to what you have got right there? I think that's the one and two and three changed. What, what was that for?
Well, the for two and, and three, since it's existing pattern is more of that two-story, we wanted to reflect that, whereas in the core, it goes up to forty-five feet, which reflects the three-story buildings that we have in that area. And, and those are consistent with the current standard.
I think it was seventy-five feet in the current standard.
Have to look that up.
So, the, all those buildings in the D T B one, all those buildings, they're not over seventy-five feet then?
No. Let's see what the height was.
Consistent ordinance downtown business DT.
I'm looking at B two D T for the building height.
Because there's that one structure, I don't know where it goes from the basement all the way up.
You're, you're correct. It, it is seventy-five in the current ordinance.
That one structure there, I don't know what building, where Lisa's dance studio is, where it goes away from bottom. That's not, is that?
It would be measured at the front sidewalk.
Not where the basement.
Not where, yeah.
I just want to make sure that, you know, what you have got in here is going to meet
Right.
their height.
And that is one that's worth taking a look at and evaluating whether it's, whether the forty-five foot is enough.
Right. Because I mean, me just looking physically, I, I don't think it is, but I'm not sure. That's why I was just asking why you'd change from the seventy-five feet to the other heights.
I think the forty-five foot is probably comparable to the building there at the corner of Fourth and Main, the corrections office.
Right.
It's a three-story building, it's also probably, probably consistent with the, the hotel, which is three stories. And so, I, I think the forty-five would
Cover.
Would cover anything that's there now. I mean, a seventy-five foot tall building is a seven-story building.
Right. Okay.
That's a great point. And staff will look into that and talk to you guys about the heights for all of downtown. Look at all three proposed zoning districts, correct, John?
Oh, absolutely. And, and these are the kinds of input that we love to hear because it makes it our ordinance as opposed to mine. All right. I'm going to move on now to the, the next couple of groups of districts. And I'll start with the residential artisan district. Now, this area currently is characterized by rather odd mix of residential and industrial uses. And when designers advocate for mixed-use development, it generally does not involve mixing industrial uses with residential because the noises, the vapors, the dust, the, the various elements of conducting industrial work tend to be disruptive for a next-door neighbor who's wants to get some rest or whatever. And so, we have had continual complaints about this area and I'll, in the, the first little picture up here, there is a, a dog groomer who has a facility to board a few dogs. And two neighbors across the street, one who recently moved out of town, but another who still lives there. They call with complaints on a regular basis about the sound of the dogs barking. Now, I've gone down there numerous times, never happened to be there when the dogs were carrying on. But the, the use is a by-right use. The dog grooming, dog kennels are allowed by our current ordinance in the M one industrial. But we have put them in immediate contact with residential uses, which are governed by the R three zoning district or may actually be in the, the, that zoning district. But in this next image, this is the location of a pallet factory that we had repeated complaints. There was a, a fire that broke out in the stored pallets in the back. Frequent unloading and loading of semi-trailers blocking the road and blocking the driveways of the, the neighbors. Our current ordinance does not require any screening if there's a fifty-foot wide right-of-way between their facility and the place across the street. Doesn't need to be any landscape buffer or anything, nor does it require a landscape buffer or screening if the next-door neighbor is also in the M one zoning district. So, if you, if you have a house in M one, you have no protection. If a business is developed next to you, they don't have to provide any screening or, or a buffer yard because you're in the same zoning district. The new U D O would add a requirement to, to put in a buffer yard between residential, existing residential uses and new industry, even in the same district. Now, if, if there's an existing industry and you build a residence, that would not trigger the business having to go back and retrofit. Because the person who built that new house knew what they were getting into. And so, if they want screening, they can handle it on their own property. Another case study is out on Lexington Street where the owner of this house repeatedly complained about the storage of recycled metal, you know, awaiting being hauled off. And, you know, so these piles, this was taken at a, I've seen it much worse than this. Now, we don't have any legal authority to require them to change this. We did ask the business owner to remedy this. And the last time I went down there, there was no scrap metal at this location. So, hopefully, that has resolved the issue. But it's, it's out of the generosity of the business owner that, that the problem's resolved, not because we had an ordinance that could require it, because both the house and the business are zoned M one. So, this is the kind of thing we're trying to fix with this. Two things the U D O would do. One, in the M one industrial district, it would eliminate the use, the residential use as a by-right use. Now, anything that's existing now would continue as a non-conforming lawful use. But we don't want to perpetuate more cases. The other thing, you know, so that changes M one to help prevent further problems. But we also wanted to create some opportunities that would allow us to rezone this in a way that allows us to control the types of industries. Some industries are not all that objectionable to live next door. They're quiet or they're clean or whatever. The, the idea was to, by making, you know, we're calling it artisan, oh, there we go. We're calling it an arbor hood for artisans because, you know, if somebody had a, a home wood shop or some sort of small-scale business that they could engage in, that it would provide some industrial use. So, we're not trying to downzone these areas and make them strictly residential. But it would provide a, a place for local artisans to have studios and do things that are maybe a little noisy, but, but not so noisy that you would drive the neighbors completely crazy.
You don't think that'll be a problem?
I think it'll be much less of a problem than what we've got now. And I've heard a criticism of this that that Withville doesn't have any artisan community. And the folks at, with Arts Council who planned the signature event for Withville, which is an arts festival. And Jen Odie, who has a, a business and some others that have businesses of in the creative arts, they get, their dander comes up pretty quickly when it's suggested that we aren't an arts community because we've frankly, invested a lot of our image in that very thing. And when we look at the potential areas where it could be, what I've identified here in this map, much of it is the existing M one. This probably wouldn't all transition to, in the future, to residential artisan because there's some areas that maybe, maybe ought to be rezoned R three or, or something else. And so, this is, you know, but each of those lots and these areas are currently zoned either in M one industrial or B one or B two. They're all existing business areas. And, but they're areas where business and industry is not really developing. And so, this is another option. It wouldn't be appropriate probably for every one of those parcels, but, but many of them it would. And it would provide an opportunity for some adaptive reuse of some interesting old buildings. Any?
By providing this menu options, let's say nobody wants to use it, nobody thinks it's appropriate, no, no. Because you really got to rely on the private market, right? You kind of rely on private developers. Who are going to want to see the opportunity, you know, or a private artisan business or somebody who's going to want to have to initiate this, right? So, let's say five years around, nobody's interested in this. It's as easy as us saying, you know, we tried that, it didn't work, nobody's interested. And then we just pull it out. I mean, it's, it's not easy. You don't rezone any land to it. It's just words on paper. Does that make sense to everybody? So, I, I understand some of your concerns about too many zone districts, but you know, really all we're trying to provide is just options to help create the community that's vibrant, creates a place that people want to be here and invest here and start businesses here. Because when you have the current conflicts that you have now, you know, like John said, your, your residential people don't really want to invest there because they don't know what industry they're going to get next to them. And the industry doesn't want to invest there.
There's, there's a reason why the pallet factory pulled out because they've been enduring constant complaints and badgering from their neighbors. And so, the current zoning ordinance is bad, not just for the homeowners, it's bad for the, the industry that, or the business that's located there. And we're hoping this will provide an option. It is not a perfect option, of course, but it is something that could work if we give it a chance. And maybe we, maybe we target an area that has a particular set of interesting buildings and, and try and promote from the town's perspective, a rezone of a little limited piece as a, as a test case, just like we did several years back with the small lot, small home overlay district. Or we wait for the interest from the community and wait for someone to ask for it. But.
Sorry, I have a question. This is mostly in the M one zone that you've got these, the R A residential. With the M one zone, because I see in the new ordinance, it says no residential is allowed to be built in the M one.
Right.
So, what happens to that section, the old stage crossings there where they already have houses in the, in the M one?
Right. Right.
Now you're saying-
Yeah, most of those houses are in the R3 there, but the ones that are actually built.
There is a section there that's part of the M1.
Right.
And I mean, you can-
They remain lawful, non-conforming use.
But you're saying that they can't build residential in the other section of land that's right there in the M1?
Well, there is, there is some incentive in this for, to encourage, I think the developer of that, you know, the owner of the balance of that property would, he's already expressed an interest in rezoning it to something that is more appropriate for the use that they're proposing. And so there's some incentives here for, you know, there's reasons why some of these folks would want to seek this new zone.
I mean, because that's one thing that I don't agree with, is not letting them to, in that M1, to build residential like it is currently. And because there's also the section on Lee Street there as well, West Lee Street, where there's some houses there, and that's also in the M1, and they're not allowed to put up residential houses.
I believe Lee Street is in the B2.
No, I see it as the M1 here on the zoning map.
Are we talking, I think you're talking about down near Reed Creek Mill?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there's also the section on Madison Street and West Jackson Street where there are those in the M1 zoning, and we're not allowing residential to have, with the new ordinances. Is that correct?
The new ordinance would not allow it. Because we have so many of these problems, I think you're citing some examples that really need to be rezoned. They shouldn't be M1 now.
And how long does the rezoning process take?
It takes probably four to six months.
Four, six months.
To go through the process of setting a hearing, advertising, and then having the hearing for this board and also the hearing for town council.
And that, I mean, that's just a couple of examples that I brought up there. I mean, I haven't looked through the rest of it, but I mean, I have a problem with that, not having, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do by not having residential there, but there are already residential in those places.
And those residential that are existing would remain okay. They can continue as they want.
You might have a lot next door that doesn't have a house next to it, and they will be forbidden to build a house when there is already a house right there.
They have to rezonate before they can build.
Right.
Which we can waive the rezon fee, maybe we can work with them on it. I mean, that's the thing, like, because you have so many issues in the town of Withville, you've got to start somewhere with trying to fix your, both your zoning mapping, your zoning ordinance.
Right.
Really got a two-part problem here. But it's not unique to Withville. I mean, every other community I've worked in, same thing. I mean, when they adopted zoning back in the 60s, they just did the best they could with identifying zone districts. But I mean, every, every community has the same challenge, but the community has to start to fix it over time or you just-
Right. I understand.
You see, right now, Fairview Park, the industrial area out off of North Forest Street, is also a by-right place where you could build a home on one of those lots.
Right.
And yet the industries that could locate there, they're not particularly appropriate to want to live next door.
Right.
And so the thing this also does is protect those existing industrial areas, which are the future economic development and employment generators of our community, to preserve that land for that use. And so you are correct that there are some areas that would be strongly incentivized to switch over to this residential artisan zoning so that they could begin to control, put some limits on the type of industry that can come, you know, it doesn't have to be an artist.
Right.
It could also be a small industrial business that is quiet enough and friendly enough to the neighbors that it fits in. It's a way to avoid a severe downzoning of these properties by still allowing some industrial use, but, you know, the area down by Reed Creek Mill, I don't think it's likely that the mill will ever operate as a mill again. And, you know, it may be time for that to shift to some other, some other zone. And, you know, if this body wants to initiate that and invite those property owners to participate in a rezone, we could do that. If they don't want to participate, that's okay. They don't, we don't have to force anybody to change.
I want to ask just one more thing. I know we've been on this topic for a while. I mean, the other thing that, you know, we have to consider is public safety, right? So how many of you guys remember seeing the story from down in Waco where they had, I think it was a fertilizer factory-
Fertilizer.
-that blew up in the middle of a residential neighborhood? And I can't remember how many people died, but when you're allowing residential uses right next to industrial uses, there is, there is a significant public safety concern that you could have a big explosion or a fire or something that, you know, could be deadly. So it is a problem that you do want to fix over time through one solution or another because it's just not good land use to do it that way.
Now, if, if you all are not comfortable with this particular solution, we can pull this from the proposed UDO and revisit it in a year when we come up with another solution.
Right.
You know, so those changes are absolutely things that you can recommend. If this ordinance is to be adopted, we can't put the controversial issues in it now. We need to get, it's too important to get the, you know, the backbone of this ordinance in place to correct the deficiencies of the current ordinance. If this is too innovative, or if you're completely unconvinced that, that we have an artist community that would take advantage of it, we can pull it now. But as it stands, as Elaine said, it's, so far, it's just words on paper. All right. The next two I'd like to look at are the, the proposed residential business district. And this first one, the RB1, is focused mainly sort of in the center of town, so the ring around downtown, if you will. And the proposed RB1, all of the properties that I've identified as potential for this are already either in an existing business district, whether it be B1, B2, or B2 DT, or it's in an area that's on our future land use map in our planning, our comprehensive plan to become future business districts. And most of those already have numerous businesses that we, that this body and town council have approved special use exceptions for business uses or have rezoned pieces of it for a business use. So there are some examples. You have the Trinkle Mansion, several dentist office, couple of law offices that are all located within this proposed area. The residential use lot sizes that I'm proposing are similar to the other, you know, these smaller lot sizes really reflect sort of what's in our current townhouse and condominium standards with, for more freestanding, getting up in the neighborhood of the limits for lot size, not quite as large as we require in R3, but still a little bit bigger. And so if you look at the proposed areas, again, this wouldn't, not every one of these parcels would probably shift to this zoning, but all of these properties that you see are part of either the B2 DT, a B1 district, or some of these further out on West Main, I think, are currently zoned M1. And if you look on North Forest Street and Monroe Street, those are currently R2 and R3 respectively, but in our future land use map and the comprehensive plan, it identifies those as transitioning to commercial. Just wanted to look up- Fly over to Blacksburg for a minute. Long South Main in Blacksburg, they have a similar situation. These houses along here, back in the late 70s, early 80s, these were fraternity, this was a fraternity row. And, you know, fraternities can be noisy, lots of parties. And there's a very nice neighborhood behind these, and that neighborhood was starting to decline because people were moving away from the nuisance of these areas. They established what they originally called a central residential district, and it's very similar to the land uses and the guidelines that I proposed in the residential business one. And basically, it allowed office uses provided that they meet the similar setback requirements for residential dwelling. And so these, they were taking existing dwellings, they utilized the alley that ran along the back, and fortunately, the blocks behind most of our main street out on West Main have an alley that's available for this similar use. And they put the parking in the rear and preserved the residential character of the street. And there are, as you go up and down the street, you will see the occasional business that's established in an existing home, but then there are other homes that people still live in. But because the zoning district allows uses that are compatible, you know, I don't have to, if I'm a widow and I love the house that I lived with my spouse for, you know, most of our lives, I don't have to leave that house because there's some obnoxious use next to me. And it has done wonders to preserve the character of that street and yet to transition those structures from homes that wouldn't be desirable because of the amount of traffic on South Main, but it provides a viable use for those, for that neighborhood. Any questions on RB1?
Do you think that'll take away from the downtown businesses, though?
Well, remember, all these areas are already zoned for business. And the examples that I showed you, those are all existing businesses in the area that I'm suggesting be eligible to rezone for this purpose. And so we're not-
Changing anything.
We're not changing anything other than the setback and the site development standards that sort of keep the look and, and prevent a drugstore from buying the house and building a new CVS next door to the Trinkle Mansion, which would probably not help her appeal for her guests.
Why, could they do that in the current ordinances?
So these are problems that haven't happened, but Food City came in and built a big store and tore down four or six homes to do it. And fortunately, it was in a place where it was appropriate. But if it, you know, if it weren't, it's still a by-right use. And RB2, a similar situation, except further out. So this is Wesley Highway and a couple of other areas that are along East Main Street that are, currently have a few homes, but they're not really, they don't really fit in. And for the area along Wesley Highway that's part of, proposes part of this, our future land use plan actually calls for downzoning that from commercial B2 to residential because the commercial interest hasn't been out there. And the only businesses that are going out there are auto repair shops and places that have turned a lot of the Wesley Highway corridor into an unsightly mess that we get complaints with regularly. And we have visited that issue as far as guidelines for automobile graveyards that are disguised as a, as an auto service and repair center. So here again, and this is the new slide, I believe, that I added in, in that B2 area, which you're convert, which I'm proposing, creating the residential business 2, these are the same kinds of residential uses that are allowed. They're referred back to basic standards of the R3 zoning. And in the, you'll notice in this, the lot size for townhouses, single-family have bumped up some because the character of that neighborhood is to have bigger lots. And so to have them, anything new fit in better with what's there, the lot sizes are a little closer to the R3 current standard. They're tighter than R3, but, but more require bigger lots than I've proposed for down in the center of downtown.
I can ask a question.
Go for it.
I'm ashamed to ask it, but I don't want the answer. Maybe you guys don't as well. But what's the difference between the proposed BR1 and the proposed BR2? Like, why do we need two of those instead of just combining them into one option?
Well, the main, the main reason is, you know, if you look at this area out on Wesley Highway where we, you know, most of the lots that are out there are large, and the homes that are there are setback- that are there are setback off the road quite a bit. And so the setbacks to work for that are just different than for downtown. And there's a few, a couple of business uses that just seem more appropriate for one than the other. And so the difference between these two is fairly subtle. And it has mostly to do with location and, and the character of the, you know, what's around it, similar to the downtown one, two, and three. Just, and when you look at the downtown one, two, and three on the land use table, land uses are pretty much the same. What changes is the setback standards and the development standards that guide how a structure would be placed on the lot.
Is it RB two or BR two?
RB two is what I'm trying to go with, but I, I pulled this out of a, one of my older files before I renamed it. I wanted to keep all of the residential uses, starting with R. And so I, that's one that I didn't, that's an edit I didn't pick up on. Next, any more questions on?
What would be the difference? I know this is very subtle. What would be the difference if you actually did put them together? How much, would it be a lot of trouble to do that or, or not?
Well, the easiest way would be to use the down, the, the standard for the ones around downtown for all of it. I feel it's less urgent to do the RB two than the RB one. You know, so if we wanted to eliminate one, that would be the one I would eliminate. I think, you know, basically keeping the two distinctions, you know, it's just some, some characters in a, in a word document, you know, it's easy, it's not going to take up much more room on the server. And, and it gives another option. But, you know, it's, that's one of the RB two may be the least important of these to preserve in my estimation because we could probably use one of the other business designations to trying to begin to control the proliferation of rather trashy looking businesses on that street. We ready to move on to mixed use business? All right. the business mixed use district is intended to provide a menu item for solving two problems. One being our limited housing and the other being redevelopment of, you know, the, the shopping center in the picture here is off to the left of the Rural King. And I think I counted three of those spaces that are occupied currently out of, I think, 25. It's, that building has a lot of problems. It's got some, it's had roof leak issues. Many of the stores in there have been gutted and when you walk by, it's, you know, it's, it's a long way from move in ready. And so in spite of the fact that there's not a lot of vacancies in commercial buildings anywhere else in town, this shopping center remains plagued with vacancy. We may have somebody interested in rehabbing this and putting it back to use. But a tool that has been used in many communities across the country for redeveloping failed shopping centers like this has been allowing mixed use development. In the, sort of the poster child of this is what's called a five over one. This one here is actually a four over one. And so that first floor is some kind of a structure that's usually masonry, concrete poured in place, or cinder block or something that has a very rigid, fireproof structure. And then the upper floors are, are wood frame construction. You're allowed to build up to five floors of wood frame construction. And so that's, you know, the, in an urban area like Austin, Texas, five over ones are coming up everywhere. another example is this lifestyle center from out in California where there's three floors of residential use above some commercial use. And maybe some buildings would be residential on all floors, but then other, a little pocket would be businesses. There are also examples of this that are probably more scaled to our community. These are bold and daring, but they're also have the advantage of providing a huge boost to our tax base without requiring extensive expansion of infrastructure. And so here where you might get 100 units that tie into one sewer line, one main sewer connection compared to a residential neighborhood where you might build a mile of residential streets and only have 20 residences connected. Well, that mile that you've got to repave streets, that you have to maintain water mains, that you have to maintain sewer mains, that you have to send police and fire out, that you have to, the school bus has to run that extra distance. Those are expensive and they're ongoing, long-term issues for a community to deal with. Now you hear horror stories about property tax rates in New Jersey or California where, you know, when I lived in New Jersey, the, the tax rate was $4.50 per hundred dollars of assessed valuation every year. The tax portion of my house payment was bigger than the mortgage payment, the interest and principal. And the reason for that is because all those old cities have old infrastructure and now they've got to pay to redo the sewer, pay to redo the water mains and, and it's extremely expensive. And we're potentially setting us up, ourselves up to have some big expenses if that's the only kind of development we allow.
I, I think it's a great, I think it looks great. I think it's a great idea, but you know, I mean, Austin, Texas is a little bigger than Withfield.
It is. That it is.
I mean, I think it looks great. I think if something like that did happen, I mean, I like it, but you know,
You know, the
Be viable or not in Withfield is a different story.
Well, and as with the others, this may be one that nobody ever takes advantage of.
Right.
But currently, that development is illegal here. And most of us recognize that it has potential to be something good.
Right.
And we certainly wouldn't want to allow it just anywhere. The, the locations that could support this are very limited.
Right.
But
John, can I ask a question? And maybe you guys can answer this. So like, let's say I was a developer and I wanted to buy that abandoned strip mall. How much do you think that real estate is going for?
Well, I don't know. I know that we have approved a subdivision of this particular property because they had a buyer and I'm told he's a local buyer who is kind of hoping to do something and redevelop that site. the negotiations have fallen through a little bit, but
I mean, let's just say three million. I don't know. You'll probably know better than me. Let's just say three million, right? So I think where John's going with this idea is that if you're going to try to renovate a strip mall that's going to cost $3 million, you're going to have to put a bold option on the table because that developer's got to get a return on investment for that $3 million. See what I'm trying to say? So you're helping the developers and the market solve some of your problems by giving them more menu options. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. And, you know, the, the construction cost per square foot when you're building multiple floors is reduced because you're making
It's reduced, but it's not reduced that much.
It's not, it doesn't go away. But it
I mean, like I said before, I like it. It's just, and I don't know who you've got interested in that property there, but I think something like that would look great for sure.
And I don't know if the person who's interested is interested in doing something like this or, or something more like a hotel or what, I don't really know what his goal is.
One thing's for sure, if you don't plan and allow for it, it's certainly never going to happen.
Right. And, and just like the, the BR two is probably the least critical, this is one that probably has the least certainty that somebody would take advantage of it. But that, you know, the only reason to, to not make this part of the ordinance is if you think that that type of development is just wrong for town. If you think that kind of density is too much like Asheville, which has a number of these, then, then clearly we need to take it out.
I mean, it can be, it doesn't have to be five over one, it could be two over one, it could be anything like that, you know, so.
Right. I think the, the small picture up here on the left is probably much more likely for Withfield than either these two bigger ones down here on the in this, I wouldn't, we don't propose any regulation of the, the lot sizes. The maximum building height is set at 60 feet, which kind of reflects that five over one maximum height. And the only areas that I really identify that might benefit from this are the couple of older shopping centers out on West Main that, that will probably never have another, a lot of busy retail establishments. They might.
Your graphic Mac is different to ours.
Yes, I, I realize that I put the, the BTS image in there instead of the BMX. And so I apologize for that error in your packet.
Yours looks more acceptable than this one.
Yeah, the other, the other one was, I looked at that today as I was putting, practicing the presentation and I thought, oops.
This would be for Instagram.
So the one in our packet is the incorrect one?
The one in the packet is incorrect, yes. And next is the BTS, which is Business Travel Services. And the problem we're trying to address here is the transition of our older hotels and restaurants. As restaurants have closed and transitioned into cannabis supply stores and as older motels are transitioning, we had a fellow who came in probably about four or five months ago, who was interested in acquiring four of these hotels and converting them to apartments. And the, from the structural standpoint or reuse of the building, it's probably not terrible. But these are the most prime hotel sites that we have in town, exit 73. I believe it's 40% of the town's budget comes from hotel and lodging taxes. And if we lose that revenue, any, anywhere that a, somebody stays for more than 30 days, we're not allowed to tax that. That becomes a normal rental property. And so that's why somebody who uses an Airbnb for, you know, to rent out to somebody who is a traveling nurse at the hospital, those 30 day and longer stays are not taxable. This district would sort of follow our current B two standards where we don't regulate lot size or setbacks. I do add a little bit of a setback to have a little bit of a buffer between the street and the structures because we do require a landscape strip. And so that 10 foot setback really is just enough to provide a required landscaping strip in front of a structure. the areas identified for this are pretty broad brush. Some of them probably wouldn't be as relevant. But basically we're looking at exit 70, exit 41, and exit 73, the areas that are close enough to the exit that a traveler who's gotten off the freeway might be able to find that hotel or other place to stay or a place to get gas. Some of this down along Ny Road is certainly up for reconsideration, as is some of the area out on the far side of exit 70 that's closer to the industrial area. We're coming closer to the end. The next one is the R four high density residential. We originally started this as a way to address the, the problems at Old Stage Crossing. But really I've built more into the, more flexibility into the R three, which I think would accommodate their problems and allow it to be zoned as R three, which would be more important, more appropriate for that side of town. But there are some areas that might be appropriate for this high density residential. in an earlier draft of the UDO, I had allowed similar densities in B two. But I realized that to do that right now, when it's adopted, it would automatically apply to the whole B two when not everywhere is right. So I backed that down to the, from the 70 bedrooms per acre that is proposed here to the 45 bedrooms per acre, which is reflective of existing apartment complexes in town such as Birchwood. Birchwood, when I calculated out there's, it came to 42 and a half bedrooms per acre. And so that's, if you're trying to envision, what is that? And so that's, if you're trying to envision, what does that mean? You know, that's not, that's not a common way to, to regulate housing density. Usually we use units per acre, but if you've got three-bedroom units per acre versus one-bedroom units per acre, you have very different impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. So by just addressing it by bedrooms, you're, come closer to regulating the number of people who can live there. The examples that you see up here, I pulled that one off the internet, don't know where it is. I think it's in, I've seen a lot of similar to those, to this one in Austin, Texas. Likewise, this is a, a unit that I didn't find the location, but these two on the bottom, you can drive to Blacksburg and see those today. This is the Edge Apartments and it's just between Tom's Creek Road and North Main Street, just off of Prices Fork Road, in case you're looking. And I calculated this out right around 70 bedrooms per acre. This is student housing, you know, mostly students that rent these apartments. And so you have mostly three-bedroom apartments that a number of students share the rent. And, but you know, it's a, a good way to get a lot of affordable apartments in a tight Here again, go back to that, you know, the density of these, these lot sizes. Frankly, it's going to be more driven by the type of development someone's proposing. If you're proposing one of those images in the picture that we just saw, you're going to have to have a lot big enough to accommodate it in the parking. But some basic minimums are established here. 70 bedrooms per acre. That 35-foot building height is probably an error. That'll need to be more if we're accommodating those four and five-story apartment buildings. But, and the setbacks here are a little bigger than we proposed for the mixed-use business And the areas identified as possible, there's an area that's sort of sandwiched between High Meadows and Castle Road. There's not a lot of residential use around it. It's basically raw land that has the potential to be developed and not have a negative impact on the neighboring properties. You know, there's other lots in and around town, but they're all up against R1, R2, or R3, and we don't want to, it wouldn't be advisable to put something like this on top of existing neighborhoods. The other lot out here is the area that Jin Woo has developed into apartments that kind of fit this. They, he's got 18 to 20 units in a building on, in two separate buildings and with parking below the units. And you know, it's not a bad-looking complex as he's wrapping up construction on it. But that is an example of what we're talking about that's already in place. All right, that's all the new zoning districts.
I have some questions just on the frontage, the minimum frontage.
Yeah, we're good. That's one of the topics for a future meeting.
Okay, not for this one. Okay.
Yep, we definitely will address that and, but I figured you can only endure so much.
So, I mean, the potential that's out to get us closer might be if any of you have, based on the information tonight or the research you've been conducting, if you have just a real aversion to any of the new zone districts, like if you're just like, there's no way I'm going to let this UDO pass if we have BMX or R4, whichever ones you may or may not like, let y'all know, you know, because I think your collective feedback helps staff maybe try to get this thing closer to where you're comfortable with it. And we can take that feedback and just let the group know, hey, we heard three people say like, we don't like BTS, you know, or we don't like R4, and, and that will help us get closer, so.
Or, or likewise, maybe you don't like it the way it's framed today. And, and you think, well, this might be a good idea, but you know, I think we need to really look at these minimum lot sizes more closely, or we need to look at setbacks more closely. And you know, there is nothing wrong with taking any one of these out of the document that we present to council for approval. And just like, you know, controversial land uses that we might not want to, you know, that we might want to talk about more at a time when we can focus on just that one issue with a public hearing for just that one topic, because we don't want to, we don't want to lose the important guts of this ordinance over one or two controversial proposals. Because it will all go, it will all fail to get passed if we, if we don't take those controversial items out of this step of the approval process. And then in the future, if the desire is present, if we have feedback from the community asking, demanding, we bring it back, will we, we can do that.
Pardon my ignorance, but explain to me, what are the controversial issues?
Well, I'll go back to the beginning of this process. There was somebody who had approached us looking for a site to do a, a small-scale meat processing plant slash boutique butcher shop. And the, the idea seemed reasonable, something that might fit in an industrial area. But the concern was raised by citizens almost immediately that, you know, we could be inviting a meat processing plant, which would be a terrible use to put in town because of the odors and just the, the general problems of, you know, if you've got meat processing, processing plants, you've probably got feedlots too, and you know, just, you know, rightfully so, they raised opposition to that. And so that doesn't mean that in the future, we wouldn't revisit some limited way to allow that use, but we certainly don't want to tie the whole ordinance to a controversial topic.
Which part of the UDO currently proposed, would that fall under which zone?
Well, if currently as proposed, we have made that a prohibited use.
Okay.
We have not allowed that in any zoning district, not with or with, not with a special exception permit, it's just prohibited. And so to make it, to allow that use, someone would have to go for a text amendment to the ordinance to make it allowed in some fashion and go through that whole approval process, which is frankly unlikely to succeed. My colleagues in the Public Utilities Department informed me today that if we had approved it as a land use, they would disapprove it because the sewage treatment, you know, the wastewater treatment plant can't handle the wastewater that would come from that type of facility. And so their requirements for pretreatment would make it cost prohibitive to have that use here. And so let's just, in my feeling, is that something that needs to stay out of it? A potential controversial issue, accessory dwelling units. Now, we have had very little opposition based on the surveys to accessory dwelling units. City of Roanoke or Roanoke County, I don't know which it is, proposed allowing accessory dwelling units and had major pushback and legal challenges over that one issue. And so we haven't had much opposition expressed here, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't come up as more people delve into the details. Now, it was part of the ad that was put out to the public, which 3,600 water customers and 3,600 Facebook users saw ads for it and had a chance to respond, plus whatever readership from the local newspaper. But there was only one negative comment, and it wasn't a particularly strong negative comment about ADUs. Another potential hot topic is Airbnb's. There are, there are adamant supporters of having them in all zoning districts, and there are people who are adamantly opposed to having them in any residential district. Haven't heard anyone oppose to them in business districts. And so those are items that, you know, if they're, if there's a potential that it would raise strong opposition, it's really better to deal with that as a one-off issue as in one of our first amendments to the UDO in 2026 or '07.
Yet for ADUs, there's been virtually no opposition to that.
There, there were one or two people who were, it was like 15% in a survey on one question that, you know, kind of said they don't, just don't like the idea. But, but 15% can be very vocal and-
Well, 1% can be very vocal.
1% can be very vocal. And so I'm, would advocate for, you know, keeping the hard choices and don't make it as part of the main overall approval of a UDO. Make it a detailed, direct dive into that issue that would be more appropriate. Next meeting, whenever that is, we'll go through the existing residential district, excuse me, the existing residential districts and what changes have happened there. And I'm hoping to be able to get also through the existing business districts, combine those two list items into one meeting. It's been a, it's been a marathon tonight, so I want to be kind to your lives.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda, consideration by the Withville Planning Commission to dispense with the Thursday, December 12th meeting. And just to summarize, as you recall, at the last planning commission meeting, the commission postponed acting on this matter until the November meeting. It's been customary in the past to dispense with the December meeting due to the Christmas holidays. If the planning commission desires to dispense with the meeting, the first regular meeting of the new year will be held on January 9th, 2025. Requires a motion and vote.
I'll make the motion. My only thing is, in the past, we've always said that if something came up that was very critical, that needed for us to meet, then hopefully the town staff would call a meeting. We don't want to miss an opportunity because we postponed the meeting.
So for example, if a citizen applied for a special exception permit or a reason happening to the citizen, we could definitely bring the meeting.
So it's my motion.
Second.
It also requires a vote?
It doesn't have to be a roll call vote though.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wouldn't think you'd get anybody opposed.
For any other discussion before we adjourn. It's 7:46 and we're going to adjourn this meeting.